Full life here in the United States. My biggest drive, Mayor Kate, fulfilling your see is really this mandate that I've felt ever since I was a young kid. You know, growing up in a war zone and a persecuted family from, you know, in a mixed marriage. I have always really been driven to help people because believe it or not, in those moments of true crises, it's really the goodness of people that comes out. We tend to think that it's the worst and, you know, I'll tell you, it's the exact opposite. And ever since seeing that, I've really been driven to finding the most direct path to helping people. During my time here in the United States throughout high school, I volunteered over 500 hours each year in school. I was a doctoral candidate at Cedar Sinai Medical Center. I spent nine years studying nanoparticle synthesis and functionalization and metabolic imaging after high school and was fortunate enough to discover at the time, the ninth known gene related to inherited cardiac arrhythmia. I thought I'd found my niche in helping people, but one thing that I found out very quickly was that the system I was in didn't really let doctors help patients if they wanted to. So I essentially shortened that trip, moved into the business world. And I know ultimately that these two minutes are not enough to build the kind of trust that we need. But I will ask you something tonight, and I hope that I hope that you can give me 10% of your trust tonight and let me earn the other 90% for the next two years.
Thank you, Dennis. You did cram a lot in those two minutes and appreciate your backstory and it very much complimented your application. So thank you. Oh, and I'm just gone. Sorry, we're all getting used to this. Okay. Oh, there you are.
Thank you. I didn't want to take up anyone's time. I appreciate the feedback, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay. So we'll just keep moving right along. Thank you, Dennis. We will invite Diana Lopez into the Zoom room for two minutes.
Hello, good evening. Thank you. Good evening. I've lived in Bering County for many years and raised my family here. I watched San Rafael grow and develop over the years. And in 2002, I made the conscious decision to make San Rafael my home. As you can see from my resume, I've worked in healthcare for most of my career. And after finishing that career, I retrained as a patient navigator and started my own business. As a member of the age-friendly San Rafael Task Force, I learned a great deal about the city, its residents, and the professionals that manage the many city departments. I decided to apply for a seat on the city council because of the opportunity that it provides to work across generations and disciplines, to work on overarching issues such as the financial consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic. I think that a post-pandemic strategic plan is essential to the health of the city. I'm also interested in working on infrastructure because I believe that a city only functions as well as its infrastructure does. And the overarching reason that I'm interested in serving in this position is to contribute to efforts in the areas of affordable housing, job creation, business development, so that San Rafael can continue to be and improve as a city where people who work here can live here, that it is a truly intergenerational, culturally inclusive, and equitable place to live. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Diana, and thanks for all that you do to bring that generational lens and your support of housing. So thank you so much. Okay, we will keep moving along. Elias Hill, you are up.
Hi, my name is Eli Hill. I am a San Rafael District Two resident. I was born and raised in San Francisco and am a fourth generation Chinese American. I currently serve on both the Planning and Fire Commissions for San Rafael. My family chose to live in San Rafael because San Rafael stands as a culturally enriching intersection in so many ways. Its natural beauty, historical architecture, and of course, its people. Of most urgency are the impacts of the pandemic. Many residents are unable to make ends meet and businesses are now shuttered or on the brink of shuttering. We must continue to examine every plausible option for relief, both short and long term, including the recent action to freeze rents and extend the eviction moratorium, which I applaud. The city already has a strong vision for our future and has been executing strategies for the critical areas of homelessness, affordable housing, climate change, and public safety, just to name a few. Foundational to this success has been the practice of earning trust with the community. I would bring to this team a career built on partnering with federal, state, and local agencies across areas of justice, transportation, public safety, and energy. As a council member, I would be a steward and communicator of the great vision that has already been established and bring multidimensional thinking with an ability to look at complex issues and form opinions by taking in history, present, and future, applying logic, law, fiscal responsibility, and most importantly, empathy and listening. A major part of our success has been and will continue to be collaborating with our regional stakeholders. I am endorsed by community members like Dr. Mizrock of the San Rafael Fire Commission, as well as the mayors of Corder Madara and San Antonio. I hope you will consider me for city council to work on behalf of and to be accountable to the people of San Rafael. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you for all that you do for the city. Okay. Next up, Eric Holm with his background. Not a problem.
Oh, is it? Is it not gone?
Oh, I don't know. I don't see you. I don't see you yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. One moment.
No, it is gone. Yep, you did it.
Yay. All right, very good. Mayor Kate, council staff, my name is Eric Holm. I'm joined tonight by Amarillo, my guide dog, who you all know. I'm originally from here, well-known and liked in the community. You can always see me and Amarillo traipsing the streets of San Rafael and hitting all of our regular establishments. Got lots of friends in the business community as well and in the restaurant business. If you've ever seen me cook, you know, that's a big ticket item because I eat out almost every night. I have a great deal of experience with San Rafael government. I know our policies, procedures, culture. I know most of the department heads and staff already. I've been a stand-in city councilman for six years. I've been on the Planning of 2040 Steering Committee for two years, Park and Recs for nine years, the ADA Accessibility Committee for nine years. I've served 10 years on the State Board, appointed by two governors of California, Governor Schwarzenegger and twice by Governor Brown. And I was the president of the State Board of Guide Dogs for the Blind, where we oversaw the entire guide dog industry, regulation, licensing in the state of California. I have a law degree. I'm very, very much active in our community. I'm a past exalted ruler of the elders. Very good. I'm involved with veterans, food banks. I think, given my demeanor, my experience, my background, I would make an excellent addition to the council. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Eric. And we look forward to the days that we can be walking on the streets and see you and Amarillo again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay. So now we will move to the next applicant, Esme Octavia Lizar. Madam City Clerk, Lizar.
Yeah, I just put in a request for her to start her video.
Sure, there it is. Okay. Esme, go ahead. I think you're unmuted. I think you're good to go.
Thank you, and congratulations to our new mayor, Kate Collin, to Vice Mayor Bushy on her promotion, and to our new council members, Kurtz and Lawrence Gilati. Hello, my name is Esme Octavia Lazar, and I've applied for a seat on the council to be of support to you and communicating with our citizens and our city stakeholders with ultimately one unified voice, a voice that speaks to the highest good of the entire community. My history with San Rafael goes back to 1972. I attended public and private school here, St. Pedro, Glenwood, Davidson, and Marin Academy. After graduating, I traveled to Northampton, Mass. to attend Smith College, where I studied international political economy and history. I attended the Monterey, now Middlebury Institute, where my concentration was international security, also called terrorism studies with a minor in nuclear nonproliferation. I have since acquired many years' worth of continuing education, ethnic studies, foreign languages, including Spanish, Chinese, and Russian, as well as design, business, and some law. I love to learn about the world around me, to understand the hows and whys of today, and civic engagement was always at the forefront of my mind while learning new things. I've also studied, lived, and worked outside the United States, but San Rafael was the first city I knew and called home, as I do today. I am first generation on one side of my family, and San Rafael was also a beacon for relatives who eventually arrived here as political refugees, going on to become full-fledged United States citizens. I'm proud to be on the Lockloman Marina Committee, regularly updated by San Rafael's Community Development Department, which oversaw the Strand Marins buyout of its unbuilt fractional inclusionary housing requirement, resulting in a great contribution of in-lu fees to San Rafael's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, making possible the purchase and development of low-income and very low-income permanent supportive housing at Whistlestop, Mill Streets Homeward Bound, as well as transitional and hopefully later with additional Project Home Key funding, permanent supportive housing at 332, providing a total of 154 possible and 110 guaranteed units of permanent supportive housing in San Rafael. I've owned and managed a chain of brick-and-mortar retail stores. I understand the challenges facing many San Rafael businesses
Five seconds.
as consumer shopping habits have changed permanently since the pandemic began. I hope to be of value to you in this walk.
Thank you, Esme. I am totally impressed the amount of information you got in two minutes. That was very impressive, and it also complimented your application. So thank you very much. We will keep moving along. Thank you. So next is Gary Thomas Bender. We will have him join.
Hello.
There we go. Okay, now you're ready. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I've never heard my middle name pronounced so prominently, but thank you.
Well, I just was reading the list. I'm sorry.
No, it's true. But thank you for the opportunity to be considered. I'm humbled and honored to be considered to join this great group. I love this town. I'm born and raised in Marin. Twenty-five years of my life. I've lived in San Rafael across districts one, three, and four. I've got one more district to go, hopefully in the near future. I'm a dad of four, sixteen-year-old, twelve-year-old, seven, and four-year-old, and I've been very active hands-on in the Glenwood, Coleman, Davidson, and San Rafael high school communities. Love those all. I'm active in fundraising. I've been on the board of St. Ray Field CYO and Little League in soccer and basketball. So I, it is, I have a habit of creating relationships across those communities and maintaining them. And what I've found is there's so much energy and excitement about San Rafael from these, all my friends and community members and parents, there's concern about San Rafael too, especially now with what's happening downtown and everybody's finances. So but I, there's latent demand for their participation, and not many have the courage or have the time to participate like I'm doing formally. I want to bring a conduit of those voices and their energy, not just through me, but with them. So I have some ideas to bring more voices and energy and contribution, whether it be time, money, resources, or skills. The second thing I want to bring is my professional expertise. You know, I was a management consultant in economics and finance. It's going to be important for the next six months, 12 months, two years, as we come out of this. I was a Visa executive where I managed my own $150 million budget, which it's not easy. Every dollar moving at one place, another hurts. Every penny counts. So I want to, but in the last five years, I've been an entrepreneur, starting financial technology companies, helping companies, big and small, banks, municipalities, City of Chicago, helping them manage their businesses and infrastructure better using financial technology tools, resources. I want to bring those to the council, to the town, to the merchants, to community, just to operate efficiently.
Five seconds.
I'm done.
Thank you, Gary, for all that you do in the community work already and raising. It sounds like a full household. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Next up, we have John Kakinuki.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the city council. My name is John Kakinuki. I'm an attorney in private practice with my law office in San Rafael. Also volunteer as a discovery facilitator with the Marin County Superior Court. I was born and raised in San Francisco and started my studies at UC Berkeley. After my father died, I moved to my mother's home country, Japan. I completed my undergraduate studies there. Then I came back to San Francisco to attend Hastings Law School. I practiced law in Japan for nearly 25 years, and we raised three children there. We decided to move back to San Rafael a decade ago to have our youngest son educated in the, in San Rafael, where we heard there's excellent special education, and we were not disappointed. He attended excellent schools in the Miller Creek School District and is now a senior at Tara Linda High School, and he's now been accepted at Dominican University with a generous scholarship. So we have strong ties to this community. Besides my civilian practice, I've served for the past decade as a JAG in the Army National Guard, where I'm considered the subject matter expert on suing bad faith lenders. One of my proudest accomplishments in life was after the earthquake tsunami and nuclear disaster in Japan in March 2011. My wife and son, youngest son, had already moved to San Rafael, but with their support, I voluntarily remained behind to help with the relief efforts. As, at the recommendations of the late Senator Daniel Inouye and the American ambassador to Japan, I was awarded the United States Army Humanitarian Service Medal for my work there, as well as a commendation from the city of Soma, the site of the
Twenty seconds.
My eldest son is a civil servant in Saitama City, a major suburb of Tokyo. He also came to eastern Japan to help with the repairs of water and sewage systems destroyed by that disaster. So public service is in our family DNA. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, John, and thank you for sharing your, your background, by far one of the most unique. And San Rafael is lucky to have you back here. Okay. Moving around. Yes, sorry. It's, it's so, Zoom is such a weird thing. I should have said that at the beginning. We wish we were all in the room together, but we're doing what we can. So thank you for your application. Okay. Next, we have Joshua Saismore. There he is. Go ahead.
Hey, how are you? Want to say thanks for having me. It's greatly appreciated. So just a quick background about myself, originally from southeastern Kentucky, hills of Appalachia, like I think population 750. Played ball in, in school sports throughout high school, college, NBA for a couple seasons. From there, moved to Miami, started my real job, professional career. And then fast forward 15, 16 years later, end up back in Los Angeles, where at that point I had ran some, you know, pretty big companies, Shanola, Lacoste, et cetera, and then decided to make the leap into kind of the entrepreneurial facet with beverage. So created a couple beverage brands, was super fortunate enough to sell those. I'm on my third now. But my main job is, you know, one year ago, I moved up to the city from LA and have, own a business here. It's a very prominent business, 1-800-GUY-JUNK. And through the last year, year and a half, it's really shown me how prominent that we are and how much the community appreciates us. So that's really probably the main reason I want to do this. The politics aside, which is interesting to me, I just have this, you know, innate want to help people. And I think, you know, as much as the community has helped our business and been there to support our business, I want to do that in some form or fashion for the community. So any way that I can impact change or impact the community is super important to me. So that's, that's kind of where this stems from.
Twenty seconds.
I think, you know, to, I'll leave you with this, you know, there's three things that will bring constantly every day is commitment, endurance, and humility. And I can, I can tell you that that's 100% me. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, and welcome to San Rafael. Been here a year. We're glad that you came up here.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we'll keep moving through the letter Js. Next up, we have Judy Cooper.
Okay. As a San Rafael resident for 28 years, I have raised a family here. I have founded and maintained a business in the city and have been an active community member. I am fully invested in the community and plan to put my experience, expertise, and energy into improving the quality of life for all San Rafael residents. My business experience is in the building trade, and that has given me the background to understand the design permitting and building process that would serve me well on a council that is considering many redevelopment projects for this city. As a past president of the San Rafael Harbor Rotary, our mission has always been to support and actively engage members of the canal community with our projects. In addition, I participated in the design charrettes to redevelop downtown San Rafael and was excited to attend the Zoom meeting where the proposal was presented to transform our city into a pedestrian-focused area where we can gather support, where we can gather, support our downtown businesses, and build community. I recently worked with members of the City of San Rafael, Cool Parks, and Marin Arboris to plant 100 trees in San Rafael. I consider myself a win-win, solutions-oriented person who analyzes options, examines consequences, and using facts and compassion, look for the best solutions. Because our citizens' involvement is vital to our city, here are a few ideas to increase that. We can build on the phenomenal success of the Citizens Police Academy by creating a citizens' government academy to give residents the opportunity to understand our local government. Our city manager suggested that residents listen to podcasts of city meetings. Let's create an app. To engage our artists and creative community, I proposed paying a stipend to local artists to paint the large black electrical boxes in our city. The artwork could stay up for six months, and then another artist could create an installation for residents.
Five seconds.
Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you, Judy. Those are, I love those ideas. We're all taking notes. Thank you for applying. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, we have, I'm just reading people's whole names, you know, Kenneth Albert Duran Gelli. There he is.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kenneth Albert Duran Gelli. I was born and raised in San Rafael, as were both my parents. My grandfather helped build this city. My grandchildren are fifth-generation San Rafael. I graduated St. Ray Fields, San Rafael High, College of Marin, and Sonoma State. I was married in San Rafael and have been with my wife, Aura, of Hispanic descent for over 35 years. Importantly, for the council, I'm a certified public accountant, San Rafael small business owner specializing in finance, economics, and business consulting, and a longtime San Rafael Chamber of Commerce member. My number-one job as a council member, I believe, will be to listen to my constituents and help weigh a decision for the council and our mayor. Many say I'm the best analyst they've ever seen. Politically, my main concern is equality and, for San Rafael, downtown vitality. My desire is to bring mathematics, critical thinking, and balanced logic to our city. I believe in a Kaizong philosophy, and I bring order to chaos. I am one who loves this city. It has been said that rivers always reach the sea. Therefore, I ask to be unanimously appointed to the council, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And we share that, the same love of the city that you have. We all feel that, and with your long roots here, it's in, literally in your bones. Thank you for your time and thank you for applying. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Matthew Soroka.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, everyone. Wow, we have so many wonderful qualified candidates. We're so fortunate. At the same time, the city is in crisis, as is the state and the country, and everything should be on the table. So my invitation is, let's be bold. My role is to ask whether we're doing everything we possibly can to help our community right now. I know there's real limits to what the city can do on its own to address the multiple challenges we face, but let's get to those limits and let's push them. We can find synergies that will help multiple issues. As I suggested, the city could be an employer of last resort, helping with critical infrastructure for needy residents who need employment right now for wildfire prevention, park maintenance. But in the short term, medium, and long term, we have to ask whether the way the city has been doing things still makes sense. Let me give an example. The city's investments are primarily in corporate bonds, primarily large banks and investment firms and companies like Walmart. Does this make sense? We earn basically nothing on these investments. Are there other more local investments that the city could make and still retain acceptable liquidity and acceptable risk? Well, if not, can we leverage our relationships with these banks to create favorable loan terms for San Rafael residents? Or be involved with Marin Credit Union? In other words, is the investment strategy aligned with the goals of promoting equity and fairness for the city? Another example, 30% of the city budget goes to the police department. There are a lot of ways to save money in the police department, but we have to be willing to ask hard questions. For example, why are there so many misdemeanor arrests for nonviolent crimes? It takes a lot of officer, thank you, huge amount of officer time. Do we need a SWAT team? Should we create a public safety department like Sunnyvale? I'm willing to ask hard questions, and I'm willing to work in partnership with all the interested parties to come up with the answers and help move us forward. I'd be honored to serve, and I would serve with humility and compassion and courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. We appreciate, I appreciate that message, to be bold. We always need that reminder. So thank you for applying and being a part of this process. Okay. Next up, we have Max Goodberg.
Everybody.
Hi.
Mayor Kate, Matthew and I are next-door neighbors, as I mentioned, to Lindsay in the application process, so that's always fun. There are so many wonderful applicants and orators in our meeting today. So I'm sure you guys have a tough decision, but not a lot of ways that you can go wrong in this process. So just to give you a little bit of background about myself that didn't come through on my resume. I've been a resident of California my whole life, Los Angeles for over half of that, and Marin County for almost a decade, San Rafael for more than half that time. So I bring something a little bit different to the table. There are a lot of longtime residents here. I'm a bit newer in my tenure. I also haven't spent time leading in the public sector, but I've spent a lot of time leading in the private sector and in nonprofits and volunteer work. I've been fortunate, fortunate enough to lead teams of five people and as large as 5,000 people. In applying for the council seat, my hope was to bring what I've learned through a career as both an individual contributor and a leader to serve the communities I live in and around. And that would be bringing my operational leadership experience, business and financial management, and to do that through a spirit of empathy, open communication, to work through contentious topics effectively and efficiently, which I think is always important for a leadership committee to do. It's particularly important to me to help evolve the city and to serve the diverse populations that make it up. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you all today and be considered for the process.
Thank you, Max. It's nice to meet you, and I, I think that's awesome that you have a neighbor. Both of you are applying, you know? And you're right. This has been, it's, I'm so impressed by everyone who's spoken so far, and we just have one more. So thank you, Max, and we will go to Nancy as our final applicant. There she is. Hi, Nancy.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Nancy Palacios, and I live in District Two of San Rafael. I'm a proud first-generation Mexican-American, daughter of immigrants. I'm a wife, a mother, and an accountant by profession. The last year magnified various inequalities in our community. These range from inadequate representation of BIPOC in leadership areas, the pandemic forcing women, in particular mothers, out of the workforce, and social and economic challenges to our BARPA community. For example, COVID-19 disproportionately impacting our low-income Latino community. It has also challenged us to reflect on our actions to dismantle systemic racism. I'm here today because I believe in our community and supporting our community during these unprecedented times. I want to foster relationships with our underrepresented community members and advocate for them. San Rafael's vision is to be a vibrant economic and cultural center reflective of our diversity with unique and distinct neighborhoods and beautiful natural environment, sustained by active and informed residents and a responsible, innovative local government. I believe in that vision and, if elected, keeping us accountable to that vision. Buenas noches. Soy Nancy Palacios y vivo en el Distrito Dos de San Rafael. Soy una orgullosa mexicana americana, hija de inmigrantes, esposa, madre, y contador de profesión. El año pasado se ha magnificado varias desagualdades en nuestra comunidad. Por ejemplo, representación inadecuada de BIPOC en áreas de liderazgo. La pandemia que ha desproporcionado mujeres, en particular madres, en abandonar la desafios sociales en económicos en nuestra comunidad BIPOC. Y nos ha desafiado reflexionar sobre nuestras acciones para desmantelar el racismo sistémico. Y nos ha desafiado reflexionar sobre nuestras acciones para desmantelar el racismo sistémico. Estoy aquí porque quiero fomentar las relaciones con los miembros de nuestra comunidad.
My second.
Si soy elegida, me mantendré y el liderazgo responsable incumplir la visión de San Rafael. Es la inclusividad. Gracias.
That is, thank you, Nancy. Appreciate you applying and putting in your application and sharing with us. So with that, I'll have you turn off your video. We all take a deep breath. An amazing number of applicants. I am just completely blown away and impressed by everybody who's put their hat in that virtual ring. So what we will do next is we will go to public comment, and after which we will move to the next step of selection, starting the selection process. So, Madam City Clerk, you will help us with the public comment portion.
I will. Thank you. If you are calling by telephone and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine now. And if you're watching through Zoom, you're welcome to use the raise hand feature. You will have two minutes to speak. I'll hold my phone up when you have ten seconds left. Additionally, we did receive a large group of correspondence that has been forwarded to the city council and published to our agenda packet online. And I will move to our first speaker.
Hello. Good evening. This is Lucia Martell Dow. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, nice to see you. So I don't envy your job. You have great applicants, a lot of people with ties to the community, a lot of people that I believe are someone who unfortunately isn't incorporated in San Rafael, but is very invested in San Rafael, especially working with low-income Latina people in Marin County in San Rafael that I wanted to weigh in, especially because I have a good friend of mine who's applying for this role. And I have to say that if it wasn't because of Gary Bender, I wouldn't be living in Marin County right now. So Gary is a friend of mine and is a person that I am inspired by all his commitment to San Rafael schools. He has been a volunteer for many years, and I know that he's a parent who is committed to making sure that San Rafael as a whole and all the community has an opportunity. I can speak for Gary's character, for Gary's ability to reach a consensus and to be a leader and bring his business acumen that I believe he cares about deeply, especially because he would like to make a commitment to help people who have been impacted by the pandemic and the recovery in San Rafael. So I just wanted to weigh in and tell you that from my perspective and my personal interaction for over ten years with Gary Bender, I am very proud to count him as a friend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lucia.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to know that, let you know that I have worked very closely with Eric Holmes, and I respect and honor him to the ninth degree. He has helped at the Elks Lodge, and he was the exalted ruler while I was there. And he has helped with the blood bank. He has helped with our veterans. He also helped with blood drives, scholarships for the children. And the lodge has raised over eighteen million dollars that we have given to the San Rafael community. And he also worked with the Guide Dogs for the Blind. He is one of the most highly respected men and people in my group of friends and in my group that I work with and volunteer work with.
Thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
I'm seeing no other hands raised, but I'm going to give it a few seconds. That concludes public comment.
Okay, so we'll conclude public comment. So, Madam City Clerk, just to clarify, we'll have all the applicants keep their cameras off right now. Is that okay?
That is correct.
Okay. So I am, as I already said, and I'm sure my colleagues do the same way, with an incredible group of people, and it reminds me and reinforces why I love San Rafael so much, that we can put out a call for applications, and this is the third time in my service to the city that we've had a call for applications, and every time we've had these incredible people. So I want to thank everybody who applied for sharing your personal stories, your lived experiences. We got ideas. We got creative suggestions, solutions, both in the application and today on video, your willingness to get involved and show up. That's what we need, and that's what the four of us on the council, we're doing that every day, and so we love seeing that in others. The reality is tonight, we're going to, we'll choose one person, so that means that twelve others will not become a policymaker, but I actually want to take a moment to talk about policy, because the way the policy is made, there's the policymakers, and then there are all the other people on the other part of the equation that help create excellent policy. It is not done in a vacuum. So whether you're a part of a neighborhood association, a community-based organization, a local business, a nonprofit, you can still help create policy and shape it and show up for our community. And I can't tell you, I can't emphasize that enough. The four of us don't go off in a room and make policy. We do it in collaboration with our community. So my hope is that you keep showing up. And I know that we're all anxious to start the process, but I did just want to briefly talk about ways that you can show up. It's one thing to say, oh, yeah, just show up, but I actually have some very concrete examples, because trust me, the twelve people that aren't selected, I want to see your face again. I want to be working with you, and here are a couple suggestions. In some of the applications, there was a conversation about schools. Unfortunately, the city does not actually oversee or guide the schools. Councilmember Kurtz and Councilmember Yuren Gulati were from the school board. So if that's your passion, I strongly recommend that is a place that you can continue to show up for your community. Sustainability and climate change, lots of interest throughout the applications came through. We have a quarterly climate change action plan where nonprofits all come together and organizations come together to solve and tackle and implement, actually, action, our climate action plan. Sustainable San Rafael is there. Drive Clean Marin is there. Those are great organizations. Or you can work through your neighborhood and create a fire-wise community. On a county level, they're implementing drawdown, so they're great ways. These are all, everything I'm mentioning touches policy that is current in the city of San Rafael. Terms of homelessness and housing, when we are working on those policies, we are working with the boards and as well as the executive directors of many local nonprofits. So we have Homeward Bound St. Vincent's, Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, Marin Organizing Committee. Those are all groups that we are in direct conversation with when we are creating policy. You can be a part of those. Racial justice, a lot of conversation in the applications as well as on the videos. It starts with our own conversation. There's a group called Show Up for Racial Justice. They are leading those conversations. They are interacting with the city. They're interacting with me. We are learning from them. In addition, the County of Marin also has a call for applications on the racial equity committee. And then finally, economic recovery. Okay, all of us can do that. We can do takeout dinner night after night. We can shop local. It's not just a slogan. It actually is a recovery tool. In addition, our neighborhood associations, they are really getting involved. How can we support local businesses? They're on, I'm lucky to serve on several economic recovery tax forces, and our local Chamber of Commerce is in all of those. So I wanted to take a few minutes, and I think I probably listed just ten ways that you can continue to impact policy regardless of whether you're on the council, the virtual council dais or not. So I can't thank you enough again for showing up for your community. And if any of you want to connect after this, after tonight, I am well available. We can have further discussions. So with that, and thank you for giving me the moment to really expand upon that, because I didn't want everyone just to go away. I'm not kidding. I would like to see you again. So now what we're going to is step three of our process, where the council will indicate our top two choices. So what we'll do is, if we can keep, if the council members can keep their comments brief, because we will probably have in-depth deliberation after we have the final four interviewed. So do that, you know, take as much time as you feel is appropriate. So I will start out, and for me, there are two critical factors that I started with, two pieces of criteria. One is recognizing that we are now in district-based elections, and then second, addressing the learning curve of joining a council. Regarding district-based elections, this is kind of strange, because we're in this transforming time, we're transitioning. And for me, if we don't select someone from District Two, I believe that they will, the people that live in District Two could be penalized, because they don't have a voice, and all the other districts in our city have a representation. So I would prioritize someone from District Two, and that's the same thing I said in December seventh when we called for applications. So I know my colleagues have heard me say that before. In addition, there's a flip side to that. If someone is not in District Two and they're in one, three, or four, where we already have council members in there, and as we start to transition to district-based elections or representation, I'm concerned about the confusion if there's two people in one of those districts. It's an interesting time. It would be a different conversation if we were two years hence and already well into districts. The next thing that I've been looking at or thinking about is the learning curve. In November twenty twenty, we had, in October of twenty twenty, we had five experienced city council members that have been on the council for a long time. And I am delighted that we have two fabulous new council members, and they are new to this organization. And like any organization, there's a learning curve, and public service has a different learning curve than private service. So I want somebody who can hit the ground running. We are in a crisis time. It came through, I think, everybody who spoke recognizes that. We need someone who can immediately understand the policies that we're considering and the issues that we're facing. So with that, based on the thoughtfulness of their applications as well as the two-minute statements, I'm delighted that there are two applicants that, for me, come to the top based on the criteria that I've been looking at. They will be assets to the council, which I will further get into if that moment comes forward. So my first choice is Eli Hill, and my second choice is Eric Holm. So with that, I will turn to Vice Mayor Bushy, and I will mute myself.
For the reasons stated by Mayor Kate, I also believe that the new council member should come from and represent District Two. I also agree that previous city service or awareness of city issues and some of the history of city issues is critical to being an effective, an immediately effective council member. For those reasons, I similarly choose as my first choice Eli Hill. He has not one but two on boards or commissions that he has served on. And Eric Holm, I had the pleasure of serving with him on the General Plan 2040 Steering Committee.
Thank you. So Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm sorry, Mayor Kate, may I get clarification? Your first choice was?
Are you talking to me or to Vice Mayor Bushy?
Vice Mayor Bushy. Apologize. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Eli Hill.
And your second choice?
Eric Holm.
Thank you very much.
Both E H.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I do also agree with Mayor Kate in the sense of the district. It's really, the whole move to districts has been tricky, and I think it's really important that we recognize and respect the move as we're moving into a district election and district representation. So identifying somebody from District Two, I think, is critical to this process. I'd also like to look at somebody who has strong financial acumen. In addition to experience so much of the work that we are doing around policy, really has to be tied to the financial picture. So I like to look at, from that perspective as well, as well as somebody who's representing our unrepresented communities. And so with that in mind, I'd like to put forward support for Eli Hill and for Nancy Palacios. Who says? I can't do that.
Your first and second. I think Madam City Clerk would like you to.
Yes, my first is Eric. Eli Hill, sorry, Eli Hill, and the second is Nancy Palacios. Help me with the last name.
Palacios.
Thank you. Very much cut on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz. Okay, Councilmember Yuren Gulati.
Yeah, I also want to echo really thanking everybody that, you know, is applying tonight. I'm very impressed, and I feel very fortunate to have such great people actually in our city. So I echo what Mayor Kate was saying about, please be involved, because it's so much talent that we would love to have you. When I'm looking at the consideration as well for city council, I'm looking as well at District Two as the area that I feel that we still need a representation. Also, somebody who has experience and can, you know, as Mayor Kate was saying, like, jump in and run with it. And the last one is to see, I guess, our city with different views. So I guess my two top choices, the first one will be, yes, because it brings like something, you know, that I think will really complement our council, is Eric Holm. And my second choice will be Eli's Hill, or Eli Hill.
Thank you.
Mayor Kate, you are muted.
That's usually a good thing. Thank you for reminding me. It's not a Zoom meeting, if you don't do that, at least once. Apologize. So Madam City Clerk, do you want to tell us the final tally, and if we have additional deliberation that needs to occur?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Right now, we have Eli with seven points, which would put him at the highest. He'd be moving on to the next phase. Eric Holm, and then Nancy Palacios. We do have room for four. We could either take the three as is, move on to the next phase, or select a fourth. Three is acceptable.
Okay, three is acceptable. Let us go with those three. And so, let me see, just looking at this. Okay, so Madam City Clerk, do you want to have, should we have all three enter the room, or how are the logistics of this? And of course, as we're doing this, I realize I left the questions in the printer. So give me a moment while I do that, and you can tell us how we're going to handle this.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, so if we could have Eli Hill, Nancy Palacios, and Eric Holm all turn their camera on and unmute themselves, and actually, while we're waiting, I'm going to start moving some of our panelists while we wait for you to grab something off the printer, Mayor Kate. I'm going to move some of our panelists over to the attendees, okay?
Okay.
And I should also say that all of the applicants wanted to express their thanks to the city council. They just couldn't fit it into the two minutes, but they wanted to express their thanks to city council and staff.
Okay, thank you. All right, so thank you for coming into the room. Wait for Eric. Eric, I think you need to turn on your video. There you go. Okay.
Hey, voila.
There you go. So we're doing this, I think, a little differently than has been done in the past, and part of that is the nature of being in this virtual room. And we felt this was probably more representative of the dynamics that occur on the council dais. So all three of you see each other, right? So it's not like one has a question, and then, you know, they get all the questions, the next person. So we will be asking each of you a question, but you'll take turns rotating who goes first, if that makes sense. So I will, and actually, as I'm talking, I realize that we have four questions. So let me think about how we want to get that fourth one, because they're all really good questions, and we really would like to have your answers. So maybe we'll just start back through the whole rotation again. So we will start. Madam City Clerk, could you clarify something for me?
Yes.
So the applicant one, two, and three, do you want to tell me what order?
You know what, if I may, I'm going to rename. So I will rename Eli to applicant number one. Eric will be applicant number two.
Okay.
And then naming them in the lower left-hand corner of their video box. And Nancy is going to be applicant number three.
Okay. Great, thank you. And again, we appreciate everyone's flexibility. This is an unusual way of having to do it. Okay, so once we ask a question, So um, once we ask the question, you will have three minutes, so not the two, you get an extra minute, three minutes to answer the question. Uh, City Clerk will give you the same as before, twenty-second verbal warning, and then a five-second warning, and then the, the mute button. So um I will start out, sorry. I, I just, anyway, I'm having a hard time reading this because my printer was just not great. Okay. I will start with the first one. Um, so for applicant Eli Hill, uh, thank you so much for your written application. Please share with the council the one thing that you would like us to know about you as a potential public servant, including anything relevant to our decision-making that might not have been covered.
Well, one thing I didn't get, well, first of all, thank you for uh allowing me to have this opportunity to answer questions. I think one thing that I wanted to talk about more that wasn't really covered um is the fact that uh I have a family here in San Rafael, and um that means so much to me. And so much of what drives me is making sure that our world is verdant for our current and next generation. A lot of how I see the world is through my daughter's eyes, making sure that she and other, and everyone around us have the same opportunities that I think everyone should have, you know, uh, stable income, access to education, digital literacy, uh, financial literacy. So anyway, I, I really wanted to emphasize more about what in my heart motivates me. It's sometimes hard to put that into an application. Um, but I really, I really hope that that uh comes through. Um, it's a, a less technical question, but it is something that I wanted to make sure could come through is my, my heart. And it's not so easy to put that into words on a piece of paper.
I'm going to mute again. Thank you. Okay, Eric Holm, I, I will read, I'll read the question every time.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep, so thank you so much for your written application. Please share with the council the one thing that you would like us to know about you as a potential public servant, including anything relevant to our decision-making that might not have been covered.
Yes, thank you. So um I have the heart of a public servant. I have uh, I've served our community, our state, and our nation. I uh, I have a big heart. I uh care about people. As, as you know, I, I have a kind of a laid-back um friendly demeanor. Uh, I work well with people. I love meeting with members of the community. Uh, I'm great with um, uh, public outreach. Uh, I've been engaged in that for quite a long period of time. I'm very good at making decisions. Uh, I was a federal legications officer in my, my earlier life and made, made very, very uh hard deliberate decisions to help people, uh, processing refugees and uh cases of asylum. With, with, with the outs and constantly involved in community outreach and helping. One of the, two of the things I'm most proud of for uh my, my time on the Park and Recs Commission, uh, one was meeting with all of the, the neighborhood groups and, and evaluating with them their cares and concerns and interests for their local parks. And then we worked on distributing the Measure A funds accordingly. And we got into public-private partnerships with them as a result, so that they got actually what they wanted to have. And uh we were able to still stay within our budget. The other was that uh we, we built the um, the universally accessible playground for the children on B Street. So it's, 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 it's designed so the children with disabilities can participate and play with all of their friends, which was actually a suggestion from one of the children that came in to talk to us, and I thought it was just fantastic.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, Nancy. Thank you for your written application. Please share with the council the one thing you would like us to know about you as a potential public servant, including anything relevant to our decision-making that might not have been covered.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. And I'm so happy that I'm able to get to the next round with Eli and Eric, because you guys seem like amazing people. I'll be honest, I moved here three years ago. I'm actually from San Francisco. I moved here with my husband. We wanted to start our family. Now I have a two-year-old daughter. And just like Eli, you're right. I look at my daughter now and I, and I just envision a world for her. We're staying in San Rafael. This is our home, and I just want to make this community so much better for my daughter. My daughter is biracial, and I want to show her the beautiful diversity that we have in San Rafael. Our Latino community, our Black community, our Asian community, we could really do something beautiful in San Rafael. So that's just some, one aspect of myself that I want, I want to um describe. Another thing is, I am an accountant. Um, my niche are private foundations. So what I do is I consult with private foundations, and I look where the money goes. And a lot of this money does amazing things for um the community, for the country, for the world. And I believe in being part of the council, I could really um really assist with this um and look in ways as to where we could be creative and really um push our community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, so we'll start Vice Mayor Bushy. We'll ask the next question, starting with Eric and Nancy, then Eli.
Question two. Describe your leadership style and how we would experience it as your colleagues, and how the community would experience it regarding key policy issues. There's a lot in there. I'll read that slowly again. Describe your leadership style, how we would experience it as your colleagues, and how the community would experience it regarding key policy issues. Applicant one.
Uh, applicant two. Eric starts.
Oh, sorry. Eric, you are muted.
Hello, hello? Can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, very good. Sorry about that. Okay, so now I know how you felt before. Um, my leadership skill is actually fairly pragmatic. I uh, I like working with people in a collaborative uh method to, to achieve what it is to um accomplish what we're, we're trying to do, to first identify a problem and then collaboratively work together to come up with the sustainable solutions. So I kind of lead from, from behind. I like to, I like to let colleagues uh participate. I love to hear from other people. I'm in my various organizations. I love to have people come in and talk with us. It's all about a win-win situation. I don't like zero-sum games. I don't think it, I don't think it accomplishes what we need to do in governance of, of a city. You know, we're, 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 we're all in this for common good, and I really mean that. So I like to, I like to be involved with people to come to the best solutions we can on any issue.
Applicant number three.
Um, as an accountant, what I do is when I go to these private foundations, a lot of them ask me, Nancy, what can we do? How can we improve our internal controls? What are the best practices out there? So, and I like those conversations with them because we do collaborate. We work together. We see what they have in, in front of them. We go through them, and we try to revise and work together to make the organization go forward and do better. It takes time. It takes a lot of effort, but that's what I like. There's, right now, I know we're, we're living through unprecedented times, but our decisions that we make at this point are just going to have a huge impact in the future. So um that's my leadership skill. My leadership um comes, my leadership style, sorry. My leadership style comes from listening and really coming together to collaborate and moving forward. Thank you.
And finally, applicant number one. Eli, you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you for your question. I think it's a great question. Um, as far as leadership style, I think for me, leadership starts with having a vision and a goal that can be articulated. And to start with that, and to be able to communicate that vision and goal uh and if appropriate, amend it as we go. Um, or I should say the vision should remain unless it's going to the wrong hill. But ultimately, what people would experience, how people would experience it, whether it's this council or the community, I hope that they experience it in the same way, because everything we should be doing is as transparent as possible. I think you would find that I tend to do my homework, um, really try to get as deep and wide into topics as I can to be informed, um, but not have a hardened opinion, uh, to develop hypotheses and seek contrasting opinions. I think both the, the public and this council would see that same behavior. And then finally, work through, if we can, to find consensus and common ground, dimensions of fiscal responsibility. Um, and then there are some cases where as much as we would try to seek win-win, there are times where there are going to be, you know, people that will not, uh, there will be two sides to an issue. And those are ones that we, that are very tricky. But I think you would find that uh with my leadership, that we are able to speak and talk through those issues with clarity and hopefully arrive at uh something we can live with or to seek further information. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent answers to a tough question. I just wanted to keep going around and having us all answer that because it's a great question. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Yuren Gulati, I will pass it over to you, and as a reminder, you'll start with applicant three. Once you read your question.
Okay, so um here it goes. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you work, work collaboratively with a team. And we'll start with applicant three.
Thank you for the question. Um, I feel like there's various examples. I mean, being a mother, I'm, I'm just going to touch that a little bit. Being a mother, wow, it just brings out collaboration and really compromise, you know, with a little toddler. Um, but when it comes to the big picture, city council, our community, um, I, I'll be honest, my experience with um the public sector is minimal. Um, I'm here because I believe in our community. I believe that right now is the time for bipolar representation in all areas of leadership. Um, so what I am doing right now is really trying to divulge myself and get involved in the little pockets and little communities here in San Rafael. We have the Canal Neighborhood that has been disproportionately um impacted by COVID-19. Um, they've always been essential. Um, they will continue to be essential, and I am so proud of that community. Um, in my, in my, sorry, the, the question, I got a little, got a little confused. But um my approach is to always be a team player, to always make sure that the last person always gets that opportunity. Um, for each child in our community to have that opportunity. There is enough for everybody, and that's something that we need to remind ourselves. There's enough in this community for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So applicant two, um, you want me to repeat the question again? I mean applicant one, sorry, Eli. Will you allow me to repeat the question? Okay. Describe.
Yes, please.
Okay. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you work in collaboration with a team.
Great. Thank, thank you. Well, um, the most difficult role, and this comes straight to the front of my mind when you asked that question. I was engaged in a project uh with a military customer. I won't be able to talk about details. But in short, the entire project, uh, we recommended should be uh conducted safely with testing and testing, and then implement uh once we are confident in testing. Instead, um, a decision was made to execute the entire project in a thirty-six-hour period. Um, so I did not sleep. Um, the results were questionable at best. It was very difficult. Uh, a lot of uh, you know, bad decisions were made because uh they were made with lack of sleep and I would say a lack of planning and testing. That was an example of something that was very difficult for me. I take a lot of pride in outcomes, and that hurt, honestly. It hurt my pride. Fast forward, that was many years ago, but um when uh a, a more recent example is a project where it's very clear what outcomes we want. We're looking at measurability, uh, and able to articulate a plan that is reasoned, is against uh understanding uh the baseline uh resources that are available, uh, and make sure that we're able to accomplish uh what we set out to do. Um, so I know that those are pretty stark contrasts, but I think um the end in these cases really depends upon the beginning uh with planning, intention, communication, uh, and risk mitigation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And then our applicant two, I will read the question again, Eric. So describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you've worked in collaboration with a team.
I have worked in collaboration with teams my entire life. Both at the Justice, United States Justice Department, um, on all of the various commissions and boards I've served on, and in all of the uh nonprofit organizations that I've been a part of. And it's always been that it's a matter of problem identification, transparency, and doing the right thing. And it has always been my experience that as a matter of communication and careful evaluation, that we've been able to get to the proper conclusion invariably, uh, as a matter of course. Um, it's a matter of listening to one another and being collaborative. Again, for the common good. You know why you're there. You know what it is that you're trying to accomplish. It's a matter of finessing, but uh, but it's, it's, it's that uh, we, we all have the same goal in mind and to be respectful of one another and, and to do what it is that we are there to do.
Okay, thank you so much, Eric, and um all the applicants.
Thank you. You can see why you were the final three. Your, your answers are so insightful. I am going to turn it now to Councilmember Kurtz, and we'll just start at the top again. Eli just spent the hot seat twice. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here this evening. So Eli, this, you'll, we'll start, we will start with you on this question. What suggestions would you have to assist our residential community that has been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Kurtz. Um, first of all, um, uh, I've had the opportunity to speak with a resident from the Canal District, and the most critical thing to this individual was describing.
Sorry, there's an accident happening right outside my window. Sorry.
Oh, gosh.
I just heard a crash. I just heard the crash. I'm waiting to see. Sorry.
Do you want to mute and call?
No, I think somebody else, they're all coming out right now. So sorry, my apologies. I'm.
No, no, it's okay. Just want to.
Um, Eli.
Do you want to start? Do you want to start again?
Yep, start.
No, no, it's okay. I can.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to speak with an individual from the Canal District um that is at this moment more disproportionately impacting than uh any of our other neighborhoods. And to this person, they described really just the incredible crunch economically that they're experiencing, literally not being able to bring in enough income in order to pay rent and basic necessities. Um, as I said in, in my opening statement, I think that we should be examining every option for relief that we can look at, short and long term. You know, on the short side, I, you know, I have seen uh, short-term side, I have seen what the council has done, and I applaud it. I think we need to continue to look at what is possible. Um, I have appreciated the navigation of policy. Um, that's incredibly difficult. That's incredibly difficult. You know, I would look, uh, further for, in terms of the more long-term, uh, and I mentioned this earlier as well, uh, around, uh, digital literacy, financial literacy, really invest in our future through education. We need to come up with sustainable ways so that people's incomes and, and ability to afford housing, uh, and basic necessities are there so that everyone can, uh, can thrive and experience a vibrant community. I, I will just acknowledge that I, I have privilege. I have an income that, that, that is, makes me somewhat, uh, safe and stable. And I want to make sure that everyone has that opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, and I think we're moving, let's see, we're going to go to Eric. Okay, Eric, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What suggestions would you have to assist our residential community that has been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19?
Thank you. And you can hear me now? Perfect. Okay, thank you. I think a great deal of this is both cultural and a matter of communication. With, look at this on both the macro and micro, uh, scaling. We have in our geography, uh, pockets of people who are underserved. And I think that, uh, making them more aware of what's going on, how, how the viruses are spread. It, as a matter of working with the, the various health industries to make sure that they have ample, uh, treatment. You know, this is not going to be easy. And I mean, it's not going to be just the city council. This is going to be a, a major, major, uh, project. So I, 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 I'm certainly sympathetic to the fact that it's true. But I think, uh, I think relying on the healthcare professionals to help us, get proper medical treatment. But we could, we can definitely work on the communication and prioritization of taking care of those most at risk.
Great, thank you. All right, applicant three. What suggestions would you have to assist our residential community that has been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19?
Thank you so much. That's a fantastic question. And I'm so glad you asked it. Um, I immediately just think about the Canal Neighborhood. You know, they're really, they're resilient community out there. Um, as, as I had mentioned, they've been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. They're central workers and that includes, um, in the restaurant business, construction business. And I saw the news today. People in those sectors have the highest risk of having COVID-19, of contracting COVID-19. What I say to that community, to my community, is that we are here with you and we will continue to fight for you. We need equitable distribution of the vaccine. They cannot be last. They don't deserve to be last. Um, I was reading over San Rafael's, um, general plan, the 2020/40 general plan. And I love the mission, the, the vision and the mission of the general plan. And it's really about inclusivity. And we really need to believe in it. I believe in it. I'm sure everyone in the community believes in it. But we need to start acting like it. Um, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, back to you, Mary.
Yep, thank you, Councilmember Kurtz. And everything is okay outside because we're all? Okay. Okay. So, a, again, these questions were not easy and they, um, you, you all three of you answered them beautifully and in depth and really complement your application. So I, I, I'm not surprised at the depth of thoughtfulness. So, uh, what we'll do now, and, and I will start out and I'll make a few comments and then, um, make, uh, my, my first choice known. And then we'll go through the rotation of all the council and we'll see if there's a motion that comes forward at the end. So, um, I'll, I'll start with, first, I have to say, District Two is totally awesome. The three of you are amazing, as are the other District Two applicants. Not that the other districts weren't great. And all I can say is fellow council members, when election time rolls around, there are some quality people out there that might be deciding to campaign and run for office. So, um, as, as we said at the beginning, this is a, a, a two-year, uh, commitment. After which, and again, our focus on District Two, our expectation is whoever is appointed but then run. So I'll, I'll, I'll start with Nancy. It is lovely to meet you and I'm so glad you moved to San Rafael. After being in San Francisco, your empathy and your compassion that you have in your family, I can see spills out to, to the world. And in terms of, um, the way that you've been an advocate for the BIPOC community and you're going to continue to show up. And, um, again, I, I'm happy that you're in District Two. Eric, you've had a long time, uh, history of getting involved with the city. And when you talk about being a good listener, it's true. You are a good listener and people gravitate towards you because they feel safe and that they can talk with you and engage with you. And you'll work with guide dogs and at the state level, at the local level. Um, and you have shown up for community for a long time. And, uh, I love your application. You said you build community and civility. Boy, if we can all be building more civility in this world, but a better place it will be. And then finally, uh, Eli, your application was so thoughtful and really, you tackled each of those subjects. There's a lot added, great thoughtfulness and depth and breadth. And you were really well-versed as to what is facing us. I was especially impressed with your, what, what you answered about the downtown. District Two covers the downtown. And your in-depth knowledge as a planning commissioner through your involvement with General Plan 2040, as well as the downtown, the downtown plan, is, is really important. Our downtown needs to have that support. And you talk about your background as a Chinese-American. Uh, I loved in your application, I don't know if you all read each other's, that you said you were a feminist. That just made me smile because the reality is there are four women on this council and we all have strong voices and we don't apologize for those and we shouldn't. But we also know we're four strong women. So, um, I, I, I really was pleased when I read that. So, um, it is, this is one of the toughest decisions I, I have to make. My first choice is for Eli Hill. So with that, I will go to Vice Mayor Bushy. And we'll just rotate around. After that, we'll go to Rachel and then to Mica.
I agree with the, with, with, um, Mayor Kate. Um, Eli's application supplemented by his presentation this evening on, uh, makes him, in, in my mind, um, the most qualified of the very qualified group, um, that we have. So, um, I support Eli Hill as my number one choice as well.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, being new to the council, you sure we can't expand it to seven?
I have to say that, I totally thought about that for a second too.
I know. It, it is really hard and I'm looking forward. I mean, this process was very new to me in terms of really starting with a blank slate of paper because I haven't had as much experience as many of the others in working with you. Eric, I, I remember, now I know where I've seen you, which was at the Pacific's Games. So you were a big fan. I was a big fan and, and hopefully we'll be able to be out there again. Thank you both and everyone really for coming out and doing this work and, and completing the application. Nancy, it's great to meet you and I look forward to working with you in lots of different capacities because I think you're going to continue to be involved. I also support having Eli and like to recommend Eli for the council. I look forward to working, you know, I think your background with the Planning Commission, is going to be invaluable. And I really appreciated your comments. You said, um, in the situation we're in right now with COVID-19. I mean, it is, it is on top of everyone's mind and we really need to have lots and lots of support and perspective as we go through this. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz. Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
Yeah, um, I will endorse the seven council members. Um, I, I think you will all be amazing in our council. I think you bring different experiences that really complement, um, you know, our, our council right now. And, and I agree with, uh, what everybody said. Uh, Nancy, it's, it's a pleasure. And, uh, I'm so excited that, um, you, um, are a recent member of our community and, uh, with a young kid. So, um, I'm excited about that. Eric, I think the experience and the qualities that you bring are very unique as well. And I know that you're in the community and, um, and I, I've, I've seen you around there too. So, um, really appreciate again the applications and everything. But, um, I also concur with Eli. I think you have a very strong application. And I also really appreciate, um, your comments around equity, housing, and also, uh, climate change. So I really like that in your application as well. So, so yeah, Eli is, um, my number one choice right now. Again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. So if there are further comments, um, my colleagues can make them or I would entertain a motion. Oh, Vice Mayor Bushy.
I may be premature. I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that we appoint Elias David Hill as the representative to the San Rafael City Council from District Two.
And I'll second that.
If I may, this will actually be an at-large city council term, even though they do reside in District Two. So if there could be a modification, if possible.
I still modify, I, I modify my motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second, uh, with the modification.
Okay, and moved and seconded. Roll call from City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 4-0. Welcome to the council, Eli. Eric and Nancy, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you.
Before they go.
Thank you so much.
But before they go, before Nancy and, um, and Eric go, I would like to ask the, the city clerk, um, one consequence of our action tonight is there's now vacancy on the Planning Commission. If the city, if the city clerk could please, um, make sure that all of the, um, applicants for city councils who were not selected, re, receive notification of the vacancy on the city council. And I hope to see you again soon, Nancy.
Be happy to do so.
Great, thank you.
I also have to add, if I may, that I, I would have to resign from the Fire Commission as well. So it's another vacancy.
Yeah, I was going to mention that too. Yes.
Right.
Some good vacancies coming out, uh, soon.
So, um, so thank you Nancy and Eric. And Eli, I don't know if you want to have any family members that come in. We are actually going to swear you in, so.
If, can you give me five seconds to?
Absolutely. Of course we can.
This is the, oh, by the way, I have news.
Well, we all know how it feels to have someone literally in, standing in the corner, so.
Absolutely. That was great. Thank you, City Clerk. Great job coordinating tonight.
Thank you very much.
This is my partner, Siobhan. Hello.
Hi, hi. Nice to meet you.
Surprise. Eli, are you ready? The, the city clerk will, uh, administer the oath to you.
If I may have you hold your right hand up. Thank you, and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Eli Hill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Eli.
Thank you. I am so humbled. Thank, thank you so much for, for considering me. And, uh, I hope to do our community the best that I can. Thank you.
Welcome, Councilmember Hill. If I may, sorry, Mayor Kate, if I may, have, do you happen to have your oath of office handy?
I, I have to tell you, I did print it out, but I, I wanted to tell you that superstitiously, I did not want to do it.
That's perfect. I do have to see you sign it. And then you will be officially your council member. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
And I, I'm delighted at the, the process, all the excellent people that were able to put their hat in the ring. The five of us have our work cut out for us. I can't wait till we're back in the chambers. Until then, we will virtually be working together. Councilmember Hill, welcome. I know you're going to be a great addition to the team. So with that, I am delighted to adjourn this meeting and we will see you, Councilmember Hill, as well as everybody else in like a week, two weeks.
Congratulations, Eli. Thank you.
Thank.
Let's congratulate them.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.